Today is Thursday, February twenty fifth. And um we are having an economic development and maintenance committee meeting and um we'll just go, I'll say your name and you can just introduce who you are and uh you know um who you affiliated with um first I'll start with the counselors, counselor Edward.
Springfield city counselor and chairman.
Counselor and I see counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, City Council Jesse Letterman, member of the Maintenance and Development Committee.
And I see our counselor, President Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's also Bishop. My name is Williams, President of Springfield City Council, thank you.
And I s- I'll start with uh I'll just start going from how I see it, I see Andy Dottie. Andy? No, no, no one know who's.
Yep, it's it's Andy Doty, CIO City of Springfield.
Okay, and I see Andrew Casey, I believe in.
Eddie and Jen Casey, we're just concerned citizens, just care about our community.
Glad to have you, um and of course Archbishop.
Glad to be with you.
Paul Price.
Yes, I'm Paul Price, Vice President and Senior Engineer for Omni Point Technology, great to be here, thank you all.
Thanks, and Barry Braxton.
Barry Braxton, Omni Point Technology.
Kathy Breck.
Evening Counselor Kathy Breck, City of Springfield Lot Department.
Thank you Kathy. Rafael Fontanaz.
Yes Rafael Fontanaz, Omni Point, like the operations.
And I see a JP Logan.
JP Logan, Chief Operating Officer, Omni Point.
Okay, and Valerie. Melid.
Yes Valerie, Valerie Melid with Omni Point.
And there's Sandra Baman.
Great day Sandra Baman, wife of Timothy Damon.
And did I get Paul Price, is that, okay, um. Timothy, uh that's yeah, okay, so what we're here for today is basically um we're here for a presentation from Omni Point, uh what I'll uh Counselor Walsh isn't gonna be able to be here today. Um but I will make sure that she gets all the notes. Um we're just basically gonna let Archbishop, he's here to do a presentation. Archbishop, I I wanted my colleagues and um the other other individuals just to be to be here, just to ask you any questions or um things, just you know, to clarify exactly um you know, what it is, you know, you say that you 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 can actually um offer, so I'm gonna give you the floor and uh do you do you need, do you need to uh show your PowerPoint, you need something to share, to be able to share it, or?
Yes, I'm gonna share a screen.
Okay, so we'll we'll turn it over to you Bishop, Archbishop and um we'll just say after that, anybody who have any questions would just go from there. The floor is yours Archbishop.
Alright, I'm trying to get this screen share, we used to be able to do these things. Thank you all, thank you, uh Mr. Chairman and all of the city counselors and city officials that are here, I don't know if I can share this uh PowerPoint, see.
And why, why, why we're waiting on the PowerPoint, um I'd like to um also acknowledge I I see Bishop Robert, if you could um at least acknowledge yourself and then say where you're coming from.
God bless everybody, Bishop Jones, Mission Church. And I'm in Springfield.
Thank you for being here Bishop, um and we'll we'll go to, whenever you're ready, um Archbishop, the floor is yours, I just wanna acknowledge Bishop Robert.
Is anyone else, thank you, uh is anyone else from uh from?
You give me see, how do I do the hosting privilege? It should be able to.
Counselor, uh through the chair, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh it might be within focuses capability to give Mr. Paul hosting privileges, I'm not sure if he has those currently.
Uh I I I do have them, I gotta leave the meeting and rejoin, give me one second.
To to clarify Marcus, um I don't need to give him hosting privileges, I do have everybody capable of sharing their screen.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, we got your back Archbishop.
Oh yeah, that was a. If I can hear this, okay, great, uh let me share this screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
So, so the city of Springfield as 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 well as other cities across America are dealing with what I call, and we've come to know, a great digital divide. Uh we have been engaged, or I have been engaged in this fight for equity equity and uh in digital divide fight for now five years in various different cities across the country, so perhaps most of my colleagues and friends and members of the city council uh have not been aware that I founded a company Omni Point. And just for the sake of uh uh of this meeting Omni Point, I know there's a separation between church and state, but the word Omni Point came from God being omnipotent omnipresent, get it? Uh well, we we began working in rural areas of the of the of the country, particularly Fallkeer County and now we were in some uh some uh thirteen different areas. Recent events has caused me to really take a look and see if I can help the city. Um Omni Point, if you were to Google Omni Point, you'll see that Omni Point already has a presence in Springfield. Now we've been operating, we can operate, but I wanted to help the city of Springfield uh and bring to the council awareness of an opportunity that I think will be great for the city. Uh cities across America are becoming smart cities or fiber cities, infrastructure of the city uh is really phenomenal, it's it's inevitable, it's coming, fiber versus coax cable. Uh and I'm not here to compare between the current um providers, because they have a cable contract and I'm not even here to deal with that, I'm here to talk about internet. And why it's so important that we have an internet alternative or even uh free market so that we can lower those prices uh particularly for people in the underserved areas and as well as people across the city who can take advantage to it, so the digital divide is real. And we know the digital divide uh deals with every aspect of our life, social, economic, culture uh and geographic areas, and particularly in Springfield, we see the digital divide really real, and it's happening across the country. And people are taking the opportunity to address this. Given the fact that uh Omni Point is here, uh we have some uh things that we taught, we call massive uh driving things that can cause the city to grow, and we define a smart city or fiber city as one that has an active plan and that plan projects uh and it has eight functional areas that can help grow the city, but yet address the digital divide, right? Um as you can see, line item two, the smart city market is estimated at a huge uh one five six trillion dollars by two twenty five. So cities are trending toward this smart city and or fiber city. Throughout the city of Springfield, we have cable infrastructure coax, which is only able to to provide to our residents, and I can understand uh on the cable side, that's a delivery for our cable type, and I don't want to touch that again. But on the internet side, is only able to provide what we call asymmetrical service, which means your upper, your higher speeds and your lower speeds are not the same, because it cannot handle the bandwidth, whereas fiber are are little packets, little packets of 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 glass that deliver data uh through light, the speed of light and through light, which is a much more economical and much more faster way uh for folks to receive internet at an economic cost and reduction uh rather to their internet price. So long as that city, that city or the city that's providing the service um can afford to uh bring fiber into the city. So we we thought we'd bring a solution, uh we wanna help the city of Springfield, and we thought we'd start by, uh and you can read this later. Uh talking about the short term goals, short term problems of a city, meeting the budget demands, changing of leadership, uh the changes we know in the population and infrastructure of Springfield to become a more brown, more brown. But in the same token, uh wanted to attract other other businesses and opportunities that will come in and enhance the overall uh tax base of the city, really, really important. And then ensuring that um that that uh we provide a high quality of service at affordable price. I don't believe that the city of Springfield uh can have a Burger King and a McDonald's and a Wendy's and and cannot have other alternative providers that can provide internet at a lower cost at a better price and especially closing this digital divide. So Omni Point is defined as smart city as one that has an active presence and plan in at least five of the areas, smart citizens, smart healthcare, smart technology, smart infrastructure, smart mobility, and you can see it's smart buildings uh uh and and so forth, if you're looking at this um presentation, you can see the various different benefits of having a fiber city or a smart city, because people are approaching, and I'll talk about that in a moment. See key parameters was that define uh a smart city in examples, so you can see who will be able to utilize the fiber, which is very different from the coax when it comes to the internet side. Uh smart energy, smart buildings, uh smart technology, a smart healthcare, telemedicine, telehealth, which we are now in that age and will be in this age. Uh senior networks, uh senior uh opportunities and governmental agencies and municipalities who can use the network. Uh so you can see from very different uh uh eight uh fields that these are revenue generators that can help uh uh generate revenue for the city, but as well as uh bringing in an opportunity to close this digital divide. I can't, I gotta keep saying that, I got a call from Boston, help deal with their digital divide, we're dealing with it in Philadelphia, in the in the in the areas. In fact, I was just in uh in uh in Washington DC, we've been called in to help the digital divide awards five, seven, and eight, which are the poorest communities, and we've already began this project, training in those communities and laying fiber. Oh, when you look at the smart cities research, access to city reports, market insights, and all of these things benefit having a smart city or fiber city. So I'm not asking that you to, uh I'm I'm asking to be open to what I'm about to propose, something that I think can help the city of Springfield in a great way, and this is really, really where I'm at today. Uh our partners that we work with are some of the best in the business, Omni Point uh has the capacity. We are already deploying and have been named the internet service provider for uh East Hartford uh for Kenosha, Wisconsin, where you all remember a lot of, a lot of problems that we had in the Black Lives Matter and police uh problems we had there, Omni Point has been asked to come in and deal with the rebuilding the infrastructure there. Uh and in several cities in in the Southern California, Simi Valley, California, uh Rachel Codova, California, Pittsburgh, California, Palmdale, California. And then here in Massachusetts, Haverhill, Massachusetts, which is a smaller community, and then potentially Lowell, Massachusetts, which has come aboard. What we're proposing for Springfield is simple. And this is gonna really, really bless you, I hope it does, and this is something that I'd like to work with the mayor, the city council, in any other community that will will embrace an idea of a fiber city, a citywide open access, open access fiber network, which will pass sixty to sixty two thousand premises throughout the city, every home, it's actually two passes uh east and west of the street, it's done through a technology called micro trenching. Micro trenching, unlike uh the the digging and the in the ditching, is only a two inch trench that is dug along with the side of the curb, drops the fiber uh and refills uh the 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 trench and matches the the exact color of the pavement or the concrete that is digging through. Uh our team has put together an analysis of eight hundred miles, which is really not eight hundred miles, it's actually four hundred miles, but because we would propose to do two passes on a street east and west so that both sides can have access to the fiber. And for redundancy, it'll be a hundred percent fiber out the network on every street. A hundred percent private investment of a hundred to a hundred fifty million dollars. Again, a a hundred percent private investment of a hundred to a hundred and fifty million dollars, let me say that one more time. One hundred percent private investment. Um now here's the key, any number of service, any number of service providers, including Comcast, including any of these service providers that are in the city right now, can utilize this network, they can utilize it, includes incumbents, it's not limited to uh uh anyone. Because it would it would be an open uh fiber network, every resident and every business can access the service. Uh then the entire fibers uh network would be built to pass every premise within twenty four months. Um many local jobs, which is a point that we really stress, we created in construction, also increased in overtime for police department, this is all paid for through this private investment. And then the municipalities can use the network to connect any municipal own facility uh and support high capacity data data services. Um this is what I came to speak with the city council about tonight. Uh it is an opportunity that Lowell has just joined, East Hartford has just joined, Kenosha, Wisconsin uh has has joined, and there are cities across America that are on fiber. The difference is, a lot of the cities that are like, for instance, Worcester, they're taking out a bond and it's a taxpayer cost. The difference in this is, the private investment is uh a no tax dollar payment to the residents of the city of Springfield. And you're able to come in and build a network that is forward thinking, it's fiber, it's fiber city, it's a smart city. Forward thinking that allows the city to utilize the structure, but as well as allow other competitors, other people to come over and use this network and to offer what we call on this open uh source network, offer competitive, affordable internet that would be specifically important for people in the underserved area and in the communities where they're less fortunate, but also the benefit would be that the city of Springfield would attract um other businesses, it is an economic stimulus, that's why it's in this committee, because it attracts other businesses who wanna come to the city, because the city has a fiber, a viable fiber infrastructure. And that infrastructure can be utilized by uh other companies. So a small company that is providing security services, uh as you know, IOT today, security is a big thing, VoIP phone, uh internet. Uh 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 any of the services that are that utilize the fiber structure are available on this open would be available rather in this open access fiber network. Um I'm having a little problem getting the next line, but I'll see if I can do it first. So the industry convergences in this are are immense, and there are innovations and opportunities for a fiber network. These innovations are converged all over the country, and it's so important that I say this, because I'm I am very key on on us giving this equality to those, even the, I understand the Massachusetts legislature is about to uh file a bill on digital, uh the digital divide. And so we, Springfield can become a a leading city, the first city in Western Massachusetts, and also perhaps in this area to be a fiber city, a smart city. We'll leave this on the screen, so if you wanna learn more about Omni Point, which is a five year old company, I'll tell you about a little about Omni Point, you have some Omni Point people on tonight. And they're on from different parts of the country, Paul Price is on from Maryland, uh JP is in our DC operations. Uh we've grown to be uh the ninety fifth largest fixed wireless company in the country. Something that was founded from a social justice perspective, because now beginning to help other cities because we have the right mission and the right purpose. And I I I remember the stories of those in 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 Ghana, Virginia, who were living in in what they thought was uh outside of the twenty first century, we brought, we brought broadband to a rural area and helped those people uh at an affordable price cut their costs, I mean cut their cost, they were paying three and four hundred dollars a month um for uh for internet and for direct TV and for other services. Whereas with an infrastructure like this, it's open infrastructure network, it allows a customer to be able to choose whether or not they wanna utilize the services of streaming television, which as you know is very popular today, uh and uh things that they can utilize for the benefit of uh of saving money and cutting their cost. Um so that's my presentation, uh I only stopped by to share it with you uh preliminarily, because I wanted to give you an overview, it's available for any city council or even the city. I will be engaging in dialogue as 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 much as I can with the city council, the mayor's office. I think this is a, an opportunity to start a dialogue to talk about now becoming a a real viable uh fiber city, a smart city. And I think we can also, at the same time, I've already been in contact with the congressman's office, I think we can also uh at the same time um lower the cost of the essential service to internet to make it more competitive, I'm not touching the cable side. But at the same time, we offer the same open source network to existing providers like Comcast, who are only providing coax uh and your internet is run over coax instead of a a robust fiber network. So I'm available for any questions, but that was my presentation, I didn't wanna tie you up, but I'm available for any questions, and I pray that I can help the city of Springfield, as I love this city.
Thank you Archbishop for your presentation, it was very informative. Um I will open it up for questions, I I I have a question real quick myself, I'm just curious, um what 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 has stopped you from doing it before, what what do you need to get going, like what are the barriers?
What was stopped us before was we were not, we competitively bid it to become, and you know, you know, the RFP process, we competitively bid it in in these other markets that we're in uh in order to uh uh go into East Hartford, and once we became a partner with the the larger company that uh has the capital, and they they really have the capital, um uh I I am the one who twisted their arm a little bit and said, look, I'd like you to consider doing my own city. We're doing East Hartford, we're doing uh California, if let's make Springfield, I'd like Springfield to be a smart city, but also it can help us close this digital divide and open up the access, so what stopped us before was primarily um uh something of this magnitude is a hundred fifty to a hundred, a hundred fifty million dollars, and most cities are doing it with with the bonds and taxpayer money, but we were able to now get a private investor to come in and assist us, so that that we don't have that hundreds of funding anymore.
Thank you Archbishop, I seen President Williams had a wanted, what what wanted to ask, wanted to ask a question, but something must have happened to his internet, I don't know if I.
He needs Omni Point. I'm serious, I'm sorry.
Well, while we wait for maybe he he'll reconnect, I I still had um a question, now they say how how it goes as far as Comcast, because I'm not, I'm really not familiar, what's the difference between uh that Comcast contract, do they need a contract with the city, would you, or anything like what what?
Yeah, well, the difference is Comcast is a is a cable contract with the city of Springfield and um uh uh Omni Point or in our partnership would have, uh would be seeking a development, development agreement with the city of Springfield at our own cost, uh and working with the city to uh develop uh a open source uh fiber network across the city. Which would not interfere with Con Comcast, because we're not a cable provider, we're we're primarily here to bring, uh make Springfield a a a smart city. But at the same time, people can utilize that infrastructure if they want to stream. Uh Comcast can use it if they wanted to deliver their content, it's up to them, it's on on them. But more importantly, the cost of internet and closing that digital divide goes down, and Springfield is poised uh for the future, because these cities like Austin, Texas, where people, where companies are moving from Silicon Valley to Austin, are moving there because of the infra- infrastructure they have. And Springfield would have the infrastructure to attract those kinds of um uh those kinds of businesses.
Okay, uh uh thank you Archbishop, and I have, I see Counselor Edwards has a question, Counselor Edwards.
Yes, uh first. It's always a pleasure to be in your company, Archbishop.
Me too.
And thank you, uh very nice presentation, enjoyed the PowerPoint. My question actually is directed, I believe Attorney Kathleen Breck is on board. Um and it sounds like a great thing, um but I always wanna know about the legalities of it, so you know, you're saying that it's completely financed, it sounds on the face of it like all you need is um either support or some, I mean some, something other than financial support, um but you need, um you're gonna tear up city streets, so I wanna hear the legalities, uh and Kathy, if it's appropriate, could you speak as to if all things being uh as they've been described, what would be the role or what would be illegal or or not able to be done uh from the law department's perspective?
Thank you Counselor, uh again Kathleen Breck, City of Springfield Lot Department. Um and Archbishop Timothy very kindly participated in our public hearing on Tuesday night regarding the Comcast contract, as did um other counselors as well. Uh but the Comcast contract that the city is negotiating has, is only regarding cable television. It really doesn't have anything to do with the internet, although we got a lot of comments about the data caps and I know concerns about the expense of of the internet. I'd say it, you know, probably forty percent of the comments had to do with internet um rather than really cable TV. But um so in terms of the proposal tonight, because I I was not familiar with Omni Point, I enjoyed the presentation. Um it's probably going, the legal issue I would think would be, you know, the the um access to digging in the streets, the public ways to install the fiber and uh you know, the various access rights and disruptions that are caused by that, but there's, you know, the DPW has a process for that, you know, application process. So I think the, you know, the city would probably need more information.
Oh yes.
And uh you know, more information about the project, you know, who the investors are, et cetera. Um it's something that I'm just hearing for the first time, but it's certainly an interesting concept. But I think it's more the um use, the and you know, digging up of the public ways would be the primary issue.
Okay, and so, I mean, uh we we do allow, I mean, it's it's a common occurrence for city council meetings for both Comcast um the ever source, other entities, public utilities to have access, and they do have to get permission from us uh even to change a poll from the city council, so uh if all things are as they were described, it would be the normal process of uneasement um worked out with um and communication with the DPW, am I correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it would be an easement, um I know the city council has a number of ordinances regarding disturbance of streets um that the PPW oversees and administers, um I'm I'd have to go back and take a more thorough look at it, but you you're our correct counselor, that it would just follow the normal process of disturbing streets, from what Archbishop Timothy is describing though, it would be pretty much every street in the city.
Yeah, and let me comment on that, uh and and a street is done within probably uh thirty minutes or less. When you talk about micro trenching, this is the uh it's a simple truck or vehicle that that drives. that drives at a pace, it digs, it lays the fiber, it keeps going. It doesn't, there's no, there's no big disruption. The only disruption would be, uh, if you're micro trenching on that side of the street in the morning. No parking on that side of the street while they're micro trenching. But the process is within an hour, that street is done and you can drive over that existing, um, uh, dig. And it's a two inch trench. So I'll share more of that when we get more in detail. Trench, we just completed it in, uh, in, uh, uh, DC, uh, in Ward's five, seven and eight. Uh, and at St. Elizabeth Park. Um, so yes, that's the only part about that. But, but the reason that's done is because you want to pass every home so that you give them the availability to have fiber. Um, and each home would then have fiber as well as it had coax, but the choice would be theirs in terms of how they would utilize that fiber, especially for the internet, which is really important.
Are you done, Counselor Edwards? Any more questions?
All right, I may come back, but right now, I, I, I think he's answered my question and Kathy's done a fair enough job. Sounds like to me that obviously we need to have another meeting or at least, uh, Archbishop Shaney and his team needs to have a conversation with DPW. Um, they would be the experts on the roads and the rules of how they would install the cable. Uh, I'm just looking for any reasons why we can't rally around this and support it. Uh, in theory, it sounds good. Um, if it's a, you know, I, I haven't heard anything yet to the point to, you know, always the first thing that comes to mind is, is who's going to pay for it. Uh, they're bringing the money to pay for it and it's not a disruption of services. Uh, is this something that, I mean, when you say two years, yeah, I, is, is two years from start every house that will be able to have access from that point on? Uh, or is this two years with, with it just getting things started? I remember when cable came, it took more than two years to get the whole city done. Um, Archbishop, could you just kind of touch on that a little bit?
No, it, it is, in, in two years is the, is the long end of it, uh, counselor, uh, to twelve to twenty-four month project. Uh, so from start to finish, uh, because we've done, we've done the analysis, uh, and, and we're doing similar market, but we've done the analysis. Uh, uh, when you look at the, the city, you'd be talking between sixty-two thousand to sixty-four thousand passes on each home. So everybody has access and business. Uh, so from design to, from design to completion, it, 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 two years is a maximum amount of time. We finished, uh, if you don't mind, uh, Paul Price, uh, I think you're down on Maryland. We, we finished DC in two weeks in that, in that St. Elizabeth Park. Do you recall that, guys?
Yes, Archbishop, we did. Uh, do remember that. That's in, uh, in Ward's seven, yes.
So it, it, but, but again, what happened was, and, and I wanted to say this clearly, I don't want to overstep the mayor or anybody. What happens generally in this, it, there is, um, you know, a buy-in from the city as a development, uh, agreement signed. I don't know, uh, who's responsible from the legal standpoint of signing that development agreement because we're pumping, putting in, making an investment, uh, into the city. Uh, but I will tell you that in, in Lowell, it's been done. Uh, it's in Haverhill, it's just completed. Uh, Salem, uh, the, they're starting construction this year, Salem. East Hartford is, we are in May, that particular, uh, uh, project is going. So it's, it's not a, it's not, it's not a, 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 a slow process, uh, if everything is in place to answer your question. But we, we can get to the details of the design, counselor, when you all want to meet and bring in the team for, uh, a Zoom meeting for a little, little bit more in depth. So this is a thirty thousand foot, try to help the digital divide and try to do something really that will help the city.
I'm not going to put, uh, uh, Mr. Doty's here from IT. I'm not going to put him on the spot. I think he's just getting a window what's going on. And so I'm going to give him some time to digest it, but I would expect that if you, and I would make the suggestion that at a, at a future meeting that we hear from him or some representatives from the IT department on, you know, their thoughts on how this could work. Um, and, um, I don't see anything negative from what you, with this, which has been displayed today. So I'm, I'm done. I wish you luck. I'm looking forward to, um, hearing more about the feasibility of this project.
Thank you, counselor.
Counselor Edwards, and now I have Council President, um, Williams.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Uh, and again, Archbishop, it's always good to see you. I, I just had a question and I know this from like working in the nonprofit sector, um, but also from conversations with, uh, Mr. Doty who's certainly on this call today, that cybersecurity and, you know, uh, threats against our systems, um, also pose, you know, of course, you know, with folks also being part of the same fiber network. Um, you know, just it, it begs the question. So I'm just wondering, can you maybe speak about your infrastructure related to firewall or anything related to?
So, so, so in, in, and, and, um, we know that, uh, that actually fiber is more secure than the coax that we currently have in terms of, uh, fibers, in terms of cybersecurity. Um, and each of the, uh, networks are built with a robust and we'll get into details with a robust, um, uh, security detail. We build the network. And then again, the open source is someone else comes along. Let's say there's another resident in the city or company that wants to come in and do, uh, an ADT or somebody wants to do, uh, uh, home security. They get to utilize that network. They are responsible for securing their, um, their network for delivery of their service. We're just providing the conduit, providing the, now when it comes to the internet side, obviously, uh, Mr. President, we have an obligation to protect it, done through his IT. And I'll let my engineers speak to how that's done because I can't. Uh, can you speak to that? I think that's a layer, you guys were talking about layer threes and some, some nets and I'm in the spiritual services, so. Can you answer this question?
Sure, I, I can answer that. Uh, the way that we, uh, operate, uh, and, uh, are going to be securing uh, the actual infrastructure for the city. Again, we, uh, we have people that, uh, that are part of our IT staff that are actually, uh, doing cybersecurity, not only just for the private sector and what we're doing, but also for the government. So we have our, um, of course, uh, equipment such as firewalls, routers, things of that nature, but also we want to meet not only just those particular coding. Um, uh, restrictions and STIGs and things of that nature. But we also want to also make sure that we're, we're meeting the physical STIGs, uh, to make sure that we are physically safe. Uh, and that we are, um, uh, security safe as far as the hackers, coding, things of that nature. So we have a actual, um, what are considered STIG requirements or requirements that we make sure that we're meeting, not only just from a private sector, but also from a uh, DOD's, uh, uh, perspective. Uh, and of course, we all know about what has taken place with um, uh, the hacking and things that have taken place over the, the last couple of months. Uh, and so we've, uh, we've had an opportunity to sit and talk with, uh, some of the, uh, DOD uh, personnel to understand, to make sure that anything that we're putting in, that we're meeting all of the requirements so that we're not just doing things locally, but so that we're internationally, we're not getting hacked. So we're not getting things pulled so that we're not having mans in the middle, things of those nature. So we, we're making sure that our requirements, uh, meet government and international standards, uh, all around. Uh, and so that keeps your city safe, that keeps your businesses safe, that keeps your government facilities safe. Uh, all of the things that'll be connecting to that network, we're making sure that that infrastructure is one hundred percent secure. Uh, and that there are no hiccups.
Appreciate it, Paul. Well, I guess there's two Pauls here now, so. Appreciate the context and, uh, I look forward to hear about the project as we.
Thank you.
Hey, Bruce, uh, let me add to that really quickly. Uh, one of the.
Excuse me, can someone, there's someone on the call that needs to mute their mic. I believe it's, uh, Paul, either Paul Price or Albert Herbert. I can't mute. Can you guys mute? I don't see if I can. Brother Al Moka. You mute him. There you go. Go ahead, Bishop.
Um, one of the things you know, some of the top name, uh, manufacturers of equipment, Nokia, is involved in this project. So the equipment, and I'm sure Andy will be able to relate when it gets down to, uh, dig down to the, to the, um, details, um, from an IT perspective. Uh, is to carry agreed equipment that also determines, uh, the, the viability of the, of the security of the, uh, of, of the, uh, the network. So I speak, um, from the high level, but the technical folks, we got on some of them online just to make sure. But there is a, a bigger engineering team that will get involved, um, as we progress that has all the knowledge about the design and the details and can answer any questions to Andy IT as well as to Kath, Kathy and any of you members of the city council. I got to say something about Marcus. I don't know, what are you taking? You look young. Uh, is it youth pill or something you, you, you taking? I got, is, was my prayers working?
I know, uh, no, through the chair, it's, it's water, Bishop, it's water.
Uh, any, any other questions, Council President? Thank you. Um, and I see, uh, Counselor Letterman has a question.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Bishop. As I said in the beginning of the call, it's good to see you and to meet uh, some of the members of your team. Please forgive me, I'm having a, uh, technical difficulty with my camera on this meeting apparently. But, uh, glad that I could join and hear the presentation. I, I'm sure as, as you're aware, this council has been significantly outspoken um, about, you know, the concerns especially related to internet access and affordability in the city in recent months. You know, this body was one of the first to speak out against the data cap that was coming down, uh, from Comcast Xfinity. And, you know, we're very glad to see that, that that has been delayed. We're working to see legislation realized at the state and federal level to outlaw that sort of action. Um, but in the meantime, I certainly am a great supporter of increased competition in the marketplace. Um, and I think that the, the future is definitely in fiber. The question is, how do we get there? Um, and so, you know, my, my, I have a couple of questions for you and your team and, um, we can talk more later as well. But I think the, the first question is relative to as a private entity coming in, making, uh, such a large scale investment upfront. Certainly, you know, I, I expect that you have to realize some level of profit, uh, for your investors um, over your, your period of time. So I guess my first question is, what price point do you envision this type of service being able to come in at in the market once it is constructed?
And that's a very good question. I was waiting on that question. There'll be print price points, obviously for the commercial side. And then primarily, we got into this for the, for the, uh, underserved, uh, and those who can't really afford, uh, the internet. Let me first say this, this is going to really bless you. Everyone gets a gig. This is a gigabyte delivery. Gigabyte, period. Get a gig. What we're doing is we've tailored it so that seniors, uh, people who are in certain, uh, particular areas who cannot afford to pay, um, for internet can have a reasonable price. And so our, our price point uh, is somewhere like fifty-nine dollars, could be thirty-nine dollars for seniors, but that's where we are. Because of the ROI in terms of the investment, uh, that would have to recover any cost. But you also, since it's an open structure, any other company can come in and utilize the structure. And, and that company or service that utilizes the structure would pay for their usage on the fiber network. Which also, um, contributes to the ROI. Um, on the business sector, uh, who really, really wants the, a gigabyte service, but obviously residents would love it also. Um, they pay a little, a little higher price because that's a business. Um, but primarily, that's where we are on that.
That's, you're, you're referring to the different levels of speed? Is that what I'm, my understanding?
Yeah, yeah, up to a gigabyte, if not more, but, but everybody can get a gig.
What, what would be your, what would be and what is your policy in other communities as a ISP around, uh, the amount of data used per month?
There is no policy. It's, you know, there are no data caps. Uh, I was, I was quite shaken when we, when we, when we saw, and that's like the little up here called us in. Uh, that's why other communities have called in. When this announcement came with data caps, you think the city of Springfield are the only communities across countries that are upset about, uh, uh, the data caps and having contracts. Uh, yeah, so, so they call us in and, but there's no data caps at all. And that's one of the, one of the greatest joys and victories. But again, I, me personally, um, I'm not the person that really controls uh, any of the speeds and data caps. We just give a speed, we're coming in, really, the open source, we're making it a fiber um, a fiber network for all residents of Springfield, for all the city, uh, businesses that want to utilize it, and the others that want to come on the open source and utilize an open source network. So if, if you saw my presentation, other ISPs or other, it, uh, uh, companies can utilize the network as well. It creates a competitive market to be able to drive down the cost of the internet.
And, and, and to Counselor Edwards' point, uh, which Attorney Breck I think has spoken to, I mean, there is nothing legally stopping you from pursuing this as a private entity um, other than the permitting aspect, right? Which, you know, which we do with, with the private entities all the time, as Counselor Edwards alluded to. So I guess I'm curious about, um, when you talk about a development agreement, what does that look like in other communities? What types of commitments does that, uh, require the, the city to make, uh, to see this type of an investment actualized?
Well, the development agreement is simply, uh, an agreement that deals with the actual encroachment on the streets. Uh, we, we take care of all the construction and permitting costs, but that is, that is the actual development agreement. Um, and then at the same time, when you're building the fiber network, um, in the city, you want to make sure that the city has a buy-in on it or at least accepts what, what, you know, the, some of the, uh, benefits that the city can benefit on from municipalities and, uh, use and other things. But no, that's it. The development agreement is, is just what it is.
And, and what do you think? I mean, have you guys done the, the market research or market analysis already to feel comfortable making that level of investment at this time? I know that, you know, in other communities that have started to build out, whether it's private or public, right? There's usually some sort of feasibility study to ascertain, you know, how many customers are, are, are going to be able to immediately enroll in this type of a service, certainly. So I mean, have you guys already done all that? Are you ready to go?
So we've done a preliminary, and, and let me tell you a little about it. OmniPoint was here prior to, uh, this particular uh, I, of making it a smart city and just giving it open access. So we've got some market analysis. But the new, uh, market analysis, we've got a high level, uh, uh, market analysis for commercial and residential. But in every city we go into, you'll have it, in every city we go into, there's a, there's an in-depth market research and analysis. We, we know the, uh, the median income of, of, of a family. We know how many businesses, how many households, single parents, how many young and old. So that will be dug down to, but we've got a high level. They've already got a high level and they looked at Springfield and said, this is a particular, uh, city that we could deploy in given, uh, the median income and the households that are here right now. Same with Lowell, Dunn. I mean, versus Haverhill. Haverhill is a smaller, almost suburban rural area. Well, the numbers don't look as, 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 as well, but it's the, it's the idea that they need the service and we're doing that also in Haverhill. So that market analysis, but you'll, you'll have access to all of that information, uh, detailed level.
So Bishop, so currently you saying you guys are developing this in Lowell, Haverhill, East Hartford, Wards in DC and Kenosha?
Kenosha, uh, uh, Seamy Valley, California, market analysis, all that's done, uh, development agreements are in place. Every, every place that I've shown you on the PowerPoint, development agreements are in place, market analysis is done. Construction is brought, is, is either begun or rolling out. Uh, and, uh, this, this partner, which we'll get more in details in our future, this partnership we have, has, has the wherewithal and the capabilities to do, they're doing thirteen states right now. And a- again, I asked them to help me, Springfield, because I thought Springfield, they utilize this kind of infrastructure, uh, build, uh, and they've agreed to, to work with us here at Springfield.
All right, Bishop, well, those are all my questions for today. Um, I All right, Bishop. Well, those are all my questions for today. Um, I'd certainly like to learn more. I think, you know, my primary concern around internet right now, in addition to, you know, affordability and access also comes to how it is governed in the future and ensuring that, you know, essentially as we've talked about tonight, in, in the fact that the internet has become very much akin to a necessity. Um, you know, I think that at some point we need to see greater regulation, uh, whether that is just seeing it regulated like a public utility or seeing it become a public service one way or another. But I will tell you that what you stated tonight in terms of the investment being prepared to go forward immediately, uh, is an interesting one. So I, I'd like to learn more and, uh, and appreciate your presentation.
And I, and, and, and at, at a, we're duly scheduled for, uh, 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 a meeting to move further, we will bring that those particular investor people to the table so you can understand market research. And we would, we really want to be, make sure you are confident in all the details of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Uh, Counselor Edward, did you have another question or?
Yes, just very quickly. Kathy, does the city council, what is the city council's role in approving this type of an agreement? Or does this solely sit in the purview of the mayor?
Uh, Counselor, I, because I've never seen it, I I'd like to, I'd have to take a look at it to see what it entails. So I'm not really in a position to answer that.
Fair enough. I just, but I thought it was.
I could take a look at it. I would be happy to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see, uh, I believe Archbishop is having a little technical difficulty.
For me?
Yeah, you're back on. You blanked out.
Can't be on here talking about internet and having internet.
You using OmniPoint?
I am using OmniPoint right now. I'm using OmniPoint right now. We have OmniPoint at our facilities in Springfield. Uh, yeah.
Oh, boy.
We brought fiber in, but I'm, I'm running the wireless right now. So wireless is a little different. Plug directly to our fi- to our fiber. We wouldn't have any delays.
Okay, yeah, all right. Now you're back again. Uh, did any other counselors or did anyone else have any questions? Okay, and I just had one quick, quick one. Just, I don't want, I don't, we ended out, but I just had a quick one. Um, just being my background, I just, it just seems, I'm just curious, like, because it sounds, it sounds too good to be true. What is the hiccup? What? You know what I mean? I don't, I don't, I'm always kept a skeptic, like, you know, it sounds like, yes, I'm gonna give you uh, five K for twenty dollars. We can put it in. It's gonna take two seconds. Like, what is the, what's the catch? Like, what is stopping you? What is the?
It's a long-term investment. And this is really funny because I had a meeting yesterday, uh, with the president of, of the investment group and they, and, and they say that that's the first thing a city said, well, this sounds too good to be true. And they said, because it is. It actually is. But, but it actually is an investment in, in. Let me rewind for a moment so I can get you back to where I am. From a social justice position, from a digital divide perspective, uh, I am real positioned, I am really concerned about our communities, especially Upper Hill, Old Hill, uh, North End, those, those communities that are lagging and, and that are behind. And that I don't see, I don't see, um, uh, Springfield as a place that should not be able to be a fiber city, a smart city, a city that can attract the kind of, of, uh, economic development that could take place that is spun from having an infrastructure. But at the same time, there's going to be a careful balance that we do not, uh, that this starts with those who have a need, those who are in deep need and this digital divide. And that's why we're in Kenosha. Uh, that city was disrupted, as, as you know, burned down. And we're, we're, we're going in there, uh, and construction jobs come from this, by the way. Technical jobs come from this for people who are trained to actually install the internet in their homes. Um, uh, the operations have, have to remain here during the entire time of the, of the service and the infrastructure. Somebody has to maintain the, uh, the, um, infrastructure. All of that, uh, is here. It will be here in Springfield. So the investment part of it, Jesse, uh, Counselor Jesse has already kind of, uh, probed into that, but the numbers will allow us uh, for, on, on the ROI to make that kind of investment. Uh, and you gotta remember, you're making investments if not just, so, so if you look at investments in Springfield, investments in, in East Hartford, investments in Lowell, investments in other parts of the coun- uh, country, uh, they feel pretty comfortable, uh, making the investment.
Thank you, Archbishop. Um, so any other questions for anyone?
I have a question.
Great, I appreciate that.
So I know this is a committee meeting and, uh, I want to thank, um, you and Katie, who I know, and I who I, I really admire, uh, Counselor, uh,
Your internet, your internet is messing up.
Counselor Edwards and Counselor, uh, it's Counselor Marcus Williams. So I would need your guidance as to, um, how we progress a roadmap from your committee as, as as to what the process is and how we begin that dialogue, because it's going to take dialogue to get us where we need to go.
Well, what, one thing I can say, I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, but a lot of times with the different counselors who are here, um, I know Counselor Edwards, he, he kinda, he's been, uh, been, you know, um, a pioneer with a lot of different subjects. So he's familiar with a lot of infrastructure, a lot of questions. I know, uh, Council President, uh, Williams, he's a firm supporter of mine. He has certain, um, certain resources and information I might not have. And I definitely wanted Counselor Letterman here because when it comes to cable, it's his kind of baby when it comes to the cap and everything. So, um, I, he, he was really, is really like when it comes to the cable and a cable cap and all that, I know that's his baby. So I'm glad that he is on. So I, I would, um, in my, in, in, in in my opinion, I would just refer, uh, your actual, my colleagues, they would, I would just, um, do, do, do any of the counselors?
Well, actually I can jump in there real quick if you would, my, um, Chair. Um, there's a few things I would suggest. Uh, it sounds perfect. It sounds too good to be good, true. Uh, but I'm not going to say that it can't happen. And in fact, I'm hopeful that it can be, it can the council will rally around it. Uh, there's a few suggestions. I think that, uh, one of the first things we need to, I would suggest is that the administration needs to be tied in. Uh, obviously it's a courtesy for us as council to hear what's going on, but you should arrange a meeting with the mayor and his staff and give them, uh, this presentation. I think that you should afford, uh, Attorney Breck an opportunity to delve into what an agreement might look like and get an legal opinion as to the easements and the process of what you're suggesting to do. Um, and then of course, uh, IT, I believe, um, Mr. Doty from IT was on. He had a family emergency. He had to leave. Um, but, uh, the thing is, is it's just getting as many players, obviously, you know, uh, the city of Springfield doesn't run as a kingdom. So, you know, the mayor is not the king. He's an elected official, just as we are. And his powers are, uh, we, we should all be working more closely together. So, but the thing is, his team is of the department, has the DPW, has the IT department, has the legal department. So I would suggest, uh, that you reach they afford the mayor the courtesy of having, um, um, his own presentation, hear his thoughts on it. I think that this, we, uh, as city counselors on this meeting, what we can help you do is make sure there are our colleagues, uh, who are not on the presentation, we can personally talk to them and explain and share what we've heard, give our feelings to them and hopefully rally some support for what you're trying to do. Um, the things that I'm concerned or wanting to hear about is, uh, most times when the city starts doing things, they always talk about competitive bidding. They talk about, you know, they can't just give things to any individual without making it public to, for anybody else who wants to do that. So that's why I'm also waiting to hear about what the law department has to say. Uh, aside from that, um, whether it is the, this particular committee chaired by, uh, my colleague, Mr. Brown, uh, Counselor Brown, or whether it goes to another committee, but it, we do need to have another committee meeting, uh, with the city council. We need to get Chris Ignolli, head of DPW here. We need to have Doty here from IT and always, anytime we're talking about doing something in the city, we need a lawyer in Rome representing our interest and the interest of the city. Um, my colleague, uh, Letterman and myself, um, we have been talking about not so much the cable. We, we've been talking a lot about the cable recently because of the data cap. But we go back three years ago, uh, talking about trying to retrofit the entire city of Springfield for LED lights. So we've been delving into this and we've had formal and informal conversations with the IT department and with Chris Ignolli, with TJ Plan Finance and others in the city on those issues and trying to talk about the city being a, um, as you describe it, a smart city. In fact, three years ago, there was an opportunity for us to engage Google as a test city, uh, and they came to us or to me particularly, uh, with the ideal of Springfield being a test city for their smart plan. Um, so I'm all on board on this. I just need, uh, um, I need to get the people, the gatekeepers or the people who in the city who control departments and who influence the mayor. And as you saw from my question was, is that what is, I need to find out what the role of the city council or are we just, is uh, is like with the casino, with, uh, with marijuana, the mayor has the purview of making the awards and we have to approve whatever he negotiates is, I need to have that type of clarity of what the role of the city council is. And as far as what you presented, it sounds like I have no, nothing negative about what you presented to this point. Uh, but I don't know what I don't know either.
I understand. Uh, and, and we are, we are, uh, gonna engage a conversation, uh, an appointment with the mayor. Uh, that, that was important, but I thought it was also important that I come to your committees, your city, because you're getting, you're getting a lot of the calls, uh, and you serve the constituents of the city of Springfield. So I, uh, we wanted to come to the city council and to the city council subcommittee, uh, to get a feel of this and then ask you, uh, after we have a meeting with the mayor, uh, and he gets his presentation, ask you to come back together and, and, and chime in and, and give us your direction as to what you, you, uh, again, zero taxpayer dollars we use. So I think it's really important.
Well, I certainly appreciate that respect and that courtesy that you afforded us as counselors. Uh, unfortunately, we don't get that enough. So, uh, I, if I was wearing a hat, I would tip it to you for that. And I appreciate the fact that you thought of coming to us and keeping us in the loop right from the very beginning and.
I see the work you guys, I see what you all are doing. I see the work you're doing. And, uh, you, you're on the front line. Uh, and we're, we're in this together. This is our city. Uh, and so we're, we're gonna have the higher level meeting with the mayor, but I wanted to talk to the council president, the council, I went to Mar- Marlo and I wanted to talk to you all. Give you, you can download the presentation. I can make sure with an email. But as, as we go forward, after the meeting with the mayor, I just wanted you to know what our intentions and hopes are to help do this project.
Right. Thank you, sir.
And, and through the chair, um, through the chair, um, if, uh, Bishop, if there's any correspondence you have relative to the presentation today, would you mind just circulating that to the chair so that, uh, our clerks can circulate it to the entire council for information?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Letterman?
Uh, just to that point, Mr. Chairman, I think my, my thoughts on next, on what I would want to see next is I, I would want to, I would agree with Counselor Edwards that I'd want to see some sort of opinion from Attorney Breck, um, just relative to the, the legal status of a project like this, not necessarily specific to OmniPoint, uh, but just in terms of what any company, if they wanted to do, uh, this type of a project in the city, what they would need to do. You know, I think, you know, I think to the, the Counselor Edwards' point, you know, normally we'd be thinking of a competitive bid process, but this is a bit of a different proposal that the bishop has brought forward because he's not necessarily asking to do anything that anybody couldn't do. Um, so I think that's the, that's the question. Um, and then on the, on the side of OmniPoint, I think, you know, what I would want to learn more about is, uh, you know, relative to the actual service offered, the reliability of the service, the track record of the service in other communities. That's what I would want to see. And the one thing that I put on the table right now in this first conversation that I'm weary of, not because of OmniPoint, certainly I've known the bishop for about half my life at this point. So I, I, I respect him and his team. But, you know, when the, when internet broadband was first starting to be, uh, put into cities, right? As well as cable, it's kind of an interesting timing with the exclusivity agreement coming up for its, uh, conversation. It was a similar situation, which was the cities were trying to attract private entities like Comcast to come in, put in place this infrastructure. And now here we are thirty some odd years later with a lot of concerns around their monopoly on the, on the market and, uh, and the options that don't exist. And so as we start thinking about the future, which is fiber, I want to make sure that however we get there, there are some protections in place so that thirty years from now, when there are the whole other set of city counselors and developers sitting here, uh, that they're not in the same concerning conversation, right? And so that's not to cast, uh, any sort of disparaging on anybody in the process, but just thinking about learning from the history and seeing how we can set us up, uh, to have a bit of a more protective uh, future around this essential service. So those are just my closing thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
And, and to your, to your point, Mr. Chair, to your point, Counselor Letterman, I totally agree. And this is why I said to the team, it has to be an open, uh, source platform to allow competitiveness, for a lot of people to participate. Because it will do us no good to be in a position again where there's a monopoly. It just, it's not that we, we, you can't keep the price of the internet down and make it affordable to those people. And then the other, they don't look at the needs of our communities. Our communities really are in this digital divide and really need to, uh, be addressed during this time. And so it's like, you know, I've heard you talking about it. I've heard, uh, Counselor Edwards talking about it. I've heard it, heard it. And I said, what can I do already being in this space in other cities? Let me do charity begins at home. Let me, what can I do to bring something home that will help our city? And, uh, and that the key area is what you just said, making sure we're not in this position thirty years from now with a monopoly. Uh, and I think that's where we are.
Sure. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Archbishop. Um, so it's now six to eleven. That's been a great presentation. I appreciate all my colleagues and everyone, all the guests for joining. Um, I definitely appreciate you, Archbishop. Um, and like I said, I usually, this is gonna definitely take a community, a team-based thing. I always, um, I always like to bring in my colleagues who I know are, have a little bit more expertise in certain things and, uh, I definitely want to commend them for coming and, uh, you guys had some great questions. Um, so if that's, if anyone has anything else, I wish we could end with a prayer, Archbishop, but it ain't that kind of.
It's lit.
When you start to pray, we might be here for another hour.
No, no, no. I'm not gonna. Well, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for your time. I'm just looking forward to seeing what I can do to help us, our city.
All right. With that, uh, my, do we need a motion to adjourn or no?
Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
So with that, we adjourn this meeting.